All right, this is what the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 3818. And the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting, the Shawshank Valley Regional Vocational Technical School Committee, is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance or members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as viewed this meeting, while meetings in progress may do so by accessing the link that was included in the meeting agenda posted on the Shawshank website and the five district town halls. If despite our best effort, we are not able to provide a real-time access, we will post the record of this meeting on the school website as soon as we are able. Entertaining a motion to go an executive session for the purpose... Second, Chairman, for the purpose of contract negotiations with non-unions. Salaries, and we will come back from executive session to public session for only purpose to adjourn. Mr. Peterson, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Glenn, Mr. Gillis, yes. We're now in executive session. Public meeting of the Shawshank Technical School Committee for first 2020. This meeting will be called to order at 7:32 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts criminal laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18. And the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Shawshank Regional Vocational Technical School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may do so by accessing the link that was included in the meeting agenda posted on the Shawshank website in the five district town halls. If despite our best efforts, we cannot provide a real-time access, we will post the record of this meeting on the school website as soon as we are able. So with us this evening live is Patty Muse from Tewksbury, Glenn Geddick from... Paul Geddick from Burlington, Jim Gillis from Wilmington, and Bob Peterson, who will cheer the meeting from Wilmington. Also present is our administrative assistant, Sayova, and interim superintendent Melanie Hagman. Via remote participation, we have Bob Gallagher from Burlington, Anthony Asbetian from Bedford, Ron Fusco from Billerica, Lisa Gallo from Tewksbury, Paula Lambrecht from Billerica, and Lynn McIntyre from Bedford. Welcome all. Anybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
All good.
Thank you. I could hear you.
We have approval of bills and payroll. We have a bill from Mr. Greenspan, the chairman, will entertain a motion to approve. Booed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just forgot about the bill in the school. There's one warrant going on around... Here with you, on the last page, there's about $18,000 in court checks. They had issued checks for travel, for food USA, and mom or... But then for our students, it was canceled. Unfortunately, warrants were cut. We had to avoid all the checks. Just want to note that those friends have all been canceled.
I can see that it's below the...
And here be no objections to Mr. Greenspan's invoice. That is unanimously for payment. Next up, we have approval of minutes for February 24th, 2020, February 25th, 2020, and February 26th, 2020. Have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm staying.
We have nine in favor and Ms. Gallagher abstains. Nine, nine in favor, one abstention, zero opposed. Agenda item number four, the superintendent's report, COVID-19 update.
So as you know, I've been sending out as many communications as I can as I receive them from the state to try to keep them informed. I just need to give a quick shout out to our agents and our cleaning crew. They've been in here every day. And when I tell you they've been washing walls, wiping down the basements, the tops, the way, the bottom, everything. They've been really going through. Our making crew has cleaned about 1,000 computers at this point. They've worked hard to make sure that everything's clean. They continue to keep it clean, updating this, just every little detail that you send out. Marking on, thank you for that. Our lunch program, I reported last week that we had three students. Today, we had 30 families come in. We are continuously getting communication from the families that please. They've come out to us, they're here to help you. So our cafeteria staff are coming in. We're starting to look here at some different things. We've got school hours coming, the parents, bringing them out to the families. We've asked that nobody get out of their car. So again, that they weren't protected here. That's good. We've sent out a bunch of donations, as I've shared. One of the new ones, the Boricofire Department came in. We were able to give up some additional digital monitors through the program that they had. So we shared those. We have three staff members coming in tomorrow in our dancing and factory room to see if we can get materials to make the three eight shields reading about. We do have three of them, water drafting, she's my mom, and... They're going to come in and something that we can do together. The principal has been working very hard, communicating with staff. Close to finalizing the plan for... From what I've seen, it went well. We've got some great feedback from our teachers. And they're going to finalize that, put the information to the staff, and then we're going to roll it down to the families. It's going to finalize, I'll share it with you. Once it's complete, at this point, until all the details really work out with our staff, that will all be rolled out next year too. And I'll be sharing all the specific details. I think that's it for the coronavirus. But I know I've shared you a lot of things also. I hope that this is made. And I'll continue to update you in the state, multiple conference calls, ESE, and a lot of our other vocational, sorry, vocational director, you know, support services, all of our mentors, as well, to make sure that, you know, we're following guidance and keeping our staff up.
The maintenance means certain areas, and you bring some staff in.
I'm having some trouble with the audio, guys. I'm having trouble hearing the committee room.
So we're actually, they, your house to come in, they're signing in at the front. So we have opened the building, in case you didn't hear, Paul. We've opened the building for staff members and students that might need to pick up a computer or some material. They're checking in with the director, they're meeting in the front of the building. The director is either escorting them to their shop. Or the director's going down themselves to get the materials and things. Computer service has been meeting staff and students in the front. Because you have to make sure that the students are on the call.
Excuse me, Melanie, I'm sorry to bother you. I did a lot, I don't know if it's from the committee room or if it's from people in their respective households, but like, there's stuff that's cutting your voice off. So I don't know if we can kind of maybe, is there a way to mute this on our end or something until we need to talk? So, because it's like dishes and stuff going on in the background that keeps cutting you out.
Upper right-hand corner, upper right-hand corner of your box, you'll see three, you'll see... Mouse over it, you'll see a mute button.
Yeah, I'm actually on my cellphone. But, okay.
I think, Lisa, I actually heard that noise, and I think that's actually coming on your end because there's no background here.
Yeah, I can, yeah, so it's probably, okay, so I have a mute button here, so that's fine. If we, people at home, if we can mute it until we're ready to talk, maybe that will work out better for us hearing you.
So when we speak, we should kill the mute, right?
Well, the problem is, you're muting yourself at home. You know, we're having a little difficulty on this end because our big screen blew up. So we're watching you on a laptop, and it's difficult to even see your faces from here. So I don't want you to mute yourselves when we go to vote. So what I would add, I think you try to reduce the background noise wherever it is that you are because the noise is not coming from this end. It's coming from your end. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
It's certainly has, Melanie, the background a little bit. So when we're putting people in the building to get whatever they get, you're introducing potential germs again. So my point is, is I think what we need to do is if anyone needs something, come and get it. And then put a dead line and say, that's it, and close the building down because...
We've done that twice.
Okay, well, then we need to...
And so that's why we've been trying to keep them maintained to the front of the building, setting up 15-minute intervals.
But even if they come in, Melanie, they still contain it all over there.
Right, we're re-cleaning. So every time they leave that night, they've got to re-clean the same areas.
You're tracing your tail.
Correct, but unfortunately, when we opened up the window for students and staff to come in, not everyone advanced.
We do have time because we're not coming back in this building quite much. But I think we make a cutoff, shut the building, and don't let anyone in. It doesn't need to be here.
Correct, I agree. And like I said, there's some of the students, the portfolios or pools, and... The administration were going to the shop, getting them, and wiping, bringing wipes with them, believe it or not, just cooked, Dave Northwood's carrying Lysol wipes with them, wiping everything along the way, cleaning everything, getting the student stuff, bringing it up to them so they weren't in. And again, I mean, the cleaners come up, and yes, redoing the floors, the windows, redoing everything on the front of the building, correct. Unfortunately, you know, they didn't come in. So now, we believe we might need one or two more days next week because more coming in.
Okay, that's fine, but in the future, we should just think, okay, that's it.
So we're trying to limit it, and again, space them out in 15-minute intervals so that they're not interacting with one another. So having them in long on their computer and leave, that's what we've been trying to do. And the cleaners are here during the day right now. So we're calling them, getting them up here immediately. Like I said, yesterday, there was a few people in here, and they went to the floors. I mean, they're going through everything all over here. We don't have that. Thank you, though. Appreciate your support on that. Okay, so that's the coronavirus update. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Ms. Hagman. Conclude your report this evening?
I can talk about other things if you want. That one was just listed separate, so I just wanted to make sure I went over that. Just through the admissions, we're planning to accept 354 students. We're accepting them by town. So this way, we're not going to have to worry about alphabetical and who we want. So we're doing everything electronically. Very hopeful that it works. We're sending out emails to everyone with acceptance letters at that point. So we have 64 on our waitlist, and as some of the accepted ones decline, they'll be going through the waitlist to, you know, pick up the void there. So that's positive news for us there. And, excuse me, our freshmen were placed in a permanent shop. So out of 302 freshmen, there was like two or three that didn't get first, second, and third. Dave Northwood's worked very closely with all the families to make sure that they were happy. It's something that happens every year. But out of 302 kids, I think they did a great job in raising all the students in that final shop for the next year. So that's good news too, in light of everything.
Thank you, Ms. Hagman. That concludes the superintendent's report. Agenda item number five, subcommittee reports. Personnel Subcommittee, Chairman Gillis.
The Personnel Subcommittee met this evening in executive session to discuss non-union personnel contracts and salaries, and those discussions are still ongoing and should be concluded next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gillis. There is no old business. Agenda item number seven, first item of agenda, first item for discussion will be discussion and vote on the election of a superintendent director. Can everybody, I want to make sure everybody at home can hear me. Are you all set with sound?
Yes, no.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So I think the first order of business, I believe Mr. McIntyre may have sent an email this morning, should be, the past practice of this board would be that a motion carries by a majority of the 10 members, which would be six. I just want to be clear, unless somebody wants to change that methodology of voting by making a motion that the election of a superintendent would be achieved by any candidate so nominated, garnering six votes of the 10 members who are eligible to vote here this evening. Any discussion or objection to that methodology, which is what we've always used?
We've only used it once.
No, we use it to vote, it's going to be voted on everything. Hearing none?
Glenn's trying to...
It would open the floor for discussion. It may be easier if somebody has a nomination. I would prefer, if possible, to go in the same order that we usually sit in when we're at the same table because that just makes it easier for me because you folks are all over the screen at home and we're in different orders. Does anybody have a correct of that?
No.
And I will start with Mr. Geddick.
I would like to nominate Ms. Lesko.
A second. So we have a nomination, Mr. Geddick for Ms. Lesko, and a second from Mr. Gillis. Mr. Fusco, would you like to make a nomination?
At this time, I'd like to nominate Dr. Susan Katska.
Second.
So we have a nomination for Mr. Geddick for Ms. Lesko, a nomination from Fusco for Ms. Katska. Ms. Lambrecht, do you have a nomination?
No, I do not have a nomination. My nomination's already up there.
Ms. Gallagher?
I do not have a nomination. My recommendation would be to put it back out to a search. And I'm not sure if that's a discussion we need to have now or after the votes.
It may be, depending on how the votes will be. Thank you. Mr. Gillis, you've seconded a motion already. Mr. McIntyre?
I would, I wanted to make a motion that we make it seven out of 10. And I agree with Lisa that we may end up having to put this back out, but I would like to make a move that we make it seven out of 10. I didn't get that through before due to the, you know, problems with Zoom. But I don't have a nomination.
Just give me a minute to think. So, Mr. Mac, I would say that Mr. McIntyre certainly has a right to make the motion, but we already voted to stick with a regular procedure, which would have required six votes out of 10. That was a unanimous vote. So if somebody voted in the prevailing side...
It was not a unanimous vote because I didn't, I wasn't able to, my audio wasn't working at the time.
Would you have voted against that motion?
I would have.
Okay, so... We're going to give you the benefit of the doubt and put you down as a no, but the motion still would have passed nine to one. So we voted in the prevailing side for the original motion. As a matter of courtesy, if they're inclined to support Mr. McIntyre's motion, we'd ask for reconsideration. Would anyone like to make that motion, which would require the affirmative vote of seven members of the committee to elect a superintendent?
I made the motion. I'm just, I guess you're looking for a second.
For a second, yes.
You can, can I go back, Glenn? You, you can't make the motion because you voted against the original motion. You had to have voted in the prevailing side.
That doesn't make sense.
That's correct.
Thank you, but that's the rule.
As a parliamentary issue, that's correct.
Okay.
So as a matter, I don't hear a motion or a second, so we're going to stick with the affirmative vote of six to elect a superintendent. Nancy, do you have a nomination?
I have not. However, I would like to make a comment, but I don't know if this is the right time. So I guess we should just let it go for now. I have no, I am with Glenn and Lisa. I am looking to search again.
Okay. Ms. Muse, you seconded the motion, so I assume you have another nomination. Mr. Gallagher?
I have no nomination.
And I have no nomination. So we have two names in nomination. Affirmative vote of six members of the committee to elect a superintendent. And since Mr. Geddick nominated Ms. Lesko first, I will start with Ms. Lesko's nomination. You can vote yes, you can vote no, or you can abstain. Your abstention doesn't count as a yes vote. Unless we get six yeses, we will not elect a candidate. So I will start with Mr. Geddick on the Lesko nomination. Yes. Mr. Fusco?
No.
Ms. Lambrecht?
No.
Ms. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Gillis?
Yes.
Mr. McIntyre?
Yes.
Ms. Asbetian?
No.
Ms. Muse?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
The chair will pass. We have three yes votes for Ms. Lesko. On Dr. Katska's nomination, Mr. Geddick, no. Mr. Fusco?
Yes.
Ms. Lambrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Gillis?
No.
Mr. McIntyre?
No.
Ms. Asbetian?
No.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
And the chair will pass. So we have three yes votes for Dr. Katska, three yes votes for Ms. Lesko. So of the group of 10, unless somebody is inclined to change their vote, the chair would open the floor for discussion as to where we go from here. And I would ask that we comment one at a time because I see eight screens up on the laptop, and it's difficult for me to tell who's talking because it's not that close to me because we lost our screen, so.
I, I'm not sure if I could maybe just kind of interject, but I would make the recommendation to extend the current interim superintendent's contract until we put this back out.
Can I just make an observation, Lisa?
Sure.
I would rule that motion out of order at this time because I think we still aren't, we have an open search.
Okay, all right.
I would ask, Nancy, I would open, you had a comment before, and the chair would open the floor to your comment.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank the screening committee. They did a lot of work. I am not happy with any of the candidates. I think that it's too important to settle for somebody. We need somebody special at Shawshank right now. And I found myself saying, I can live with this one, I can live with that one, but that's not how we should pick somebody. We shouldn't be settling. We should be choosing somebody that can do the job. And I think this current situation, as horrible as it is, is an opportunity with the school closed, and who knows when it's going to open, to go out for a search again. It might be a new pool of candidates, we don't know. But I would like to give it a shot and see what else is out there.
Any group?
I agree with that.
I don't know, Bob. I was hoping that we could have closure on this item. And I've been involved since day one. It's not a difficult, it's a very difficult process. And this is what brought, we had 12 candidates apply. I don't know, I hate to start at square one. That's my two cents.
Ronnie, I understand, and I would echo Nancy's comments to everyone that searched on the subcommittee and for the members who made phone calls for references and went on the site visits. I went on all of the site visits. It was a significant number of my colleagues. They went on a majority of the site visits. I would personally echo Ms. Asbetian's comments. And that's just my opinion. But Ronnie, I understand exactly how you feel.
Could I add another comment?
You may.
I'm talking about the process now. I don't know what another process might be, but the site visits, I went to three out of the four. I found them very revealing. However, I was disappointed that so few of us were able to make them. I don't understand the point of them if only three or four of us, or two or three of us are able to go.
That's a matter of personal preference. I think the subcommittee did a lot of pre-screening work. And Mr. Fusco was a member of that committee. And he personally followed many, many of the references that were on the applicants from each of the applicants, as did Ms.... In my opinion, that probably sufficed to him that he knew enough about each candidate to know how he felt. And I think everybody did their best to go on the site visits. It's very difficult.
It is.
You know, I was, I intended to go up to Willie, but my schedule didn't work for me.
I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just, of the process. I just wonder if there's another process that might be more...
I think, I think should the committee elect not to move forward this evening, however, the new process takes up is going to be over the majority of the members of this committee.
So do we have, do we have a discussion about what that process is going to look like? Is it, do we move forward with MASC again? Do we go out on our own? Like how, you have to have a discussion about that tonight?
I don't, I don't think we do, Lisa, that's just my opinion.
I also want to, Bob, excuse me, I also want to make mention that after June 6th, we'll get two new members to this committee.
It's possible. Unless the elections get extended, in which case we'll be lucky enough to keep the members that might not be with us in June, but I think we're all aware of that situation.
Yes.
So can I have a discussion? I have, I guess I have a couple of comments and I have a couple of questions. The process is daunting. I firmly believe we had more than one qualified candidate for this job posting. My fear is that we don't find qualified candidates going forward. And the next thing is I do understand that it's a very trying time at Shawshank. It's a very trying time. It's a very trying time in many areas, and the reality is, I don't think we're ever going to find a perfect candidate, and I don't think we're ever going to find a candidate that's going to check all of our boxes for all of us. There's ten of us. But I do think that we have a qualified candidate, if not one or two qualified candidates, and I think that with every new process, there is some uncertainty, and we have to go based on the qualifications of our candidates. And just not being a part of the screening committee, not going on any of the site visits, my personal opinion, after those interviews, knowing that, and I do interview people, you know, as part of my job, that I found that all four of those candidates did an excellent job interviewing, and I do disagree that we do not have a qualified candidate. I think there is more than one qualified candidate for Shawshank out of these four candidates. That's my own personal opinion, and I don't think that we are ever going to find a person that checks all of the boxes for everybody, and I would hate that we just have this process just continue to go around in a circle. That's my two cents. I do value everybody else's opinions as well, but I think that we have to think that whoever this person is going to be for the superintendent, it's going to be a learning process for them, no matter who they are, whether you're internal or external.
Thank you, Paula. I hear you're log and clear, but at the end of the day, you've got two names in nomination and no more than three affirmative votes for any of the nominees.
No, I, Nancy.
Okay?
Yeah, I would agree with Paula, and just like, you know, I mean, I was there from the beginning, but when I chose who I chose at the end because it wasn't the person I originally wanted, I actually, I had a system. I wrote down the criteria, their experience, their interviews. I, I did site visits and phone calls, and I do believe we get a qualify, you know, that we have qualified candidates, and I'm afraid like Paula, what if the next group, maybe near as good as this group?
I mean, that's, I think that's just a chance to take.
I know, it is.
So, does the chair hear a motion on where we proceed from here? Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gettich and a second by Mr. Gillis to suspend the search. And just to be clear and to make sure that anybody listening at home, and so that I can keep order, I'm going to do it in a roll call vote as we did with the nominations.
I'm sorry, would you re-say that again, to extend the search or re, I didn't?
Terminate.
Terminate the search.
Thank you.
And we have a motion by Mr. Gettich and a second by Mr. Gillis. Mr. Gettich, on the original motion?
Yes.
Mr. Fusco?
No.
Ms. Lambert?
No.
Ms. Gallagher?
I'm sorry, what? I didn't hear you.
On the motion to suspend the search?
Um, yes.
Mr. Gillis?
Yes.
Mr. McIntyre?
Yes.
Ms. Asbetian?
Yes.
Ms. Muse?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson, yes. Motion carries eight to two in the affirmative. To suspend the search, and the committees will have to meet in the immediate future to determine.
Seven to three.
Seven in the affirmative, three in the negative. Lambert, Fusco voted in the negative.
Yes.
I apologize. My next agenda item.
I just, can I say one more thing?
I'm sorry, I apologize. Go ahead.
No, I, I realize it's very difficult for everyone to get together on the same page here. It's, it's a, with ten of us, five might be easier, but yeah, it's a long process, and I, I don't know if we're ever going to agree upon somebody, but it's, I'm not, and I probably echo Ms. Lambert, I'm not pleased that we're going to start all over again. We got some great people here, and Shawshank, I think, would do great with one of them. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome, Ronnie, and I appreciate your comments. Ratification of SDA contract. Mr. Gillis? Mr. Gillis, may I, may the record reflect that the chair left the...
Yes.
The school committee met in executive session. Tending ratification of the teachers, received a letter from teachers' association, SDA, ratifying that contract. Um, and lawyer?
Yeah.
We'll just have to come out of executive session to vote. Those minutes haven't been.
Having trouble hearing you, Jim?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
We voted in, we don't have those minutes, so at the next meeting, we're just bringing it up for the next time.
Sorry.
All right? I mean, that's, that's the process, it's technicality, but you just vote in executive session, you'll have to come out of executive session. But I just wanted to announce the teachers did ratify.
Teachers did ratify? Okay.
They ratified the contract, yeah.
We already, we already, we already approved it, Jim.
Pardon me?
We already approved it, didn't we?
In executive session, and those minutes haven't been approved.
Thank you.
Not done yet.
Thank you. Thanks, boy. Yep, just getting caught up. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Peterson can come back. May the record reflect the chairman re-enter the meeting at 8:07. Thank you, Mr. Gillis. Program of studies, Ms. Heck.
For the, the, Mrs. Muse, the chair of the curriculum subcommittee.
I am the chair of the curriculum subcommittee, but we do not have a meeting. I will say, all of us had a chance to read it. I don't know if anybody on the committee had any issues with it. I had a few issues with it, they were answered, so I would recommend to pull this program of studies.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gettich, and who made the second at all?
Glenn.
Glenn Mack. You have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, usually, giving no objections. I'm sorry. I don't know what it is. Well, seconded. Proposed 2020, 2021 school calendar.
So, John Bagney and I have met, and we reviewed this. We both agree, the recommendation is to actually have our freshman class start Thursday, August 27th, and then have all students come August 31st for the rest of the week. We'd have that Friday before Labor Day as a day off, Labor Day. By doing this, it gets us out of school if we have the five snow days on June 18th. As you know, MAVA does a great summer conference for our teachers. We usually send forty-plus students there, but faculty members to the Connecting for Success, so this will allow that final week for that to begin, you know, like when our students go gold, go off to nationals, and this will also...
I'm telling, Melly, I try, can't hear you.
I'm going to speak louder.
Louder.
All right. So, the, the goal by starting in August was to have the final week in June so that the faculty members were allowed within MAVA. We send forty-plus teachers to a Connecting for Success Professional Development Conference. It's a week-long between Assetment and Blackstone, and it's something that really benefits our staff. It's great for them, and historically, we've been lucky enough to get gold and go to nationals, and that also would be the week, so free up that last week if we had other opportunities that wouldn't consist of finals and the last day's test. So, that's why, um, our schedule that we've agreed to and wanted to present to you is your approval.
Okay, great.
Is that the first time we've started before Labor Day?
Yes.
Uh, there may have been one other time, way, way back.
I've seen my, done it one other.
In my, my teaching career, I remember we tried it once, but yeah, with the exceptionally late Labor Day. I'll make a motion to adopt the school calendar.
Thank you, Ronnie. You have a motion to adopt the school calendar. Do we have a second? Second, second by Mr. Gillis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Posed.
Nine in favor, one opposed. Ms. Muse voted in opposition.
And we did have an understanding with the union that this is going to be part of studying, something that we agreed to on the April 30th, you know, but because we raised so few snow days...
I think everybody in the state is doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Proposed 2020, 2021 school committee meeting dates.
So...
Second. We have a motion to approve the meeting dates for 2020, 2021. Not interested. Captain, on the meeting dates? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Our request from Tewksbury Youth Baseball?
Yeah, today, hopefully, this has, yeah, this is something we've done, you know, twelve, we've done at Alarca, so it's something Tewksbury has asked of us, spoke to Dan Orwell, yeah, I mean, the plan was in spring, but neither's, you know, feel that's going to happen, but if you approve it, we'd like to put it into our office.
Want you by?
Yeah, it's going to be done in the fall, obviously.
You approve the request from Tewksbury Youth Baseball. Any further discussion? On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Probably would be wise if we decided as a group sometime in the near future, like we're going to be, to discuss where we go from here, if we're setting up a school committee, go into search, we can have that discussion in the near future. Maybe personal something in the, that earlier, some recommendations for the full committee.
When is our next meeting scheduled? Calendar, do you?
April 28th.
April 28th, I changed it on the calendar, okay.
We, we prior to that, as long as we give the required statutory notice, 28 hours, as this meeting is doing now, we'll agree with the committee, but we can discuss that in the coming days when we want to post that meeting.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
So, are you suggesting getting together prior to our meeting?
Well, we'd have to post it as a, as a public meeting. We just have to decide what day would work for all of us, because I would like, I'd like it to be a process that involves all ten of us.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do we want to discuss that now, or do we want to wait? But, it's like, so, I guess maybe what I'm asking is, are we going to have a meeting prior to our school committee meeting to discuss what the next step's going to be for the superintendent's search?
I would say that's probably a good idea, Lisa.
Okay, so, can we look at maybe like, I can't throw out a date of April 21st?
It's April vacation.
Oh, that's April vaca, well, is it really vacation? Sorry.
No, you're right. Good point.
I know, I know it's on vacation at my house.
Good point, Lisa. Get them back to school.
My God, I wish. So, unfortunately...
Give the teachers anything they want now.
Unfortunately, I won't, I won't be able to commit to anything.
Excuse me, given everything else that's going on, I don't see why we're having a separate meeting on April 21st is any great improvement over just waiting until April 28th.
I'm fine with that if that's the purview of the committee.
That's fine.
That works.
That's fine. You could put on the agenda discussion on how to proceed.
That's fine. We'll do that. No further discussion, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Obviously, I'd like to thank all of you that weren't here in person for tuning in and for the time you put into the search.
Thank you, Bob.
During that 8:16 PM. Thank you very much.